I'd like to call to order the September twelfth, twenty twenty four, Venter City Commission meeting. Uh, would everybody please rise for the flag, Slade? Thank you. Lisa, roll call, please.
Commissioner Langgraf?
Here.
Commissioner Mento?
Here.
Mayor Kribel?
Here.
Uh, Lisa, would you please read the open public meetings notice?
Pursuant to Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. The agenda has been posted in City Hall and on the city's website.
Lisa, would you please me read the live streaming announcement?
The City of Venter offers live streaming and the option of public comment via remote access. Public who participates remotely will be needed during the commission meeting, except during the public comment portions of the meeting. Any person attempting to disrupt the meeting may be denied access at the discretion of the city. In the event remote access is unavailable due to a technology malfunction or other reason beyond the city's control, the city will not pause or stop the live meeting. City commission meetings are held in person and the public is welcome to attend. The best way to ensure an individual's ability to publicly comment is to attend in person so that the comments may be made in the event of a technology malfunction. The city reserves the right to discontinue offering public comment via remote access at the discretion for any future meetings.
Thank you. Uh, we'll be voting on three resolutions tonight. That's why we have such a packed room tonight. Uh, during the workshop portion of our meeting, it's um, uh, where we'll be um, proudly appointing uh, new officers to our ranks at the Venter City Police Department. Can I have a motion to adopt uh, resolution twenty twenty four dash two five one? Resolution, the City of Venter County of Atlantic State of New Jersey, appointing Mark Supran to police lieutenant.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa.
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. And I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash two five two. Resolution, City of Venter County of Atlantic State of New Jersey, appointing Lindsay O'Call as a police sergeant.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa.
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. And I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty four dash two five three. Resolution, City of Venter County of Atlantic State of New Jersey, appointing Lou Struglia. Hopefully pronounce that correctly as police chaplain within the City of Venter Police Department.
I'll make that motion as well.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa.
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. At this time, we'd like to begin to administer the oath of office, uh, starting with, um, Mark Supran, please.
I'm Mark Supran.
I'm Mark Supran.
Do solemnly swear, do solemnly swear, that I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
That I will faithfully.
Partially.
Partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All the duties.
All the duties.
Of the office of.
Of the office of Lieutenant of Police.
Lieutenant of Police. Effective September first, twenty twenty four. Effective September first, twenty twenty four. According to the best of my skills and ability.
According to the best of my skills and ability.
Over to the side, Mel. So I am in the side of the yard. Appreciate your work.
Congratulations.
Lindsay will be the first sergeant, female sergeant in this, at the Venter City Police Department.
Paul Stottman.
Hi, Lindsay O'Call.
Hi, Lindsay O'Call.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the governments.
And to the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And I will faithfully.
Partially.
Partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Sergeant of Police.
Sergeant of Police.
Effective September first.
Effective September first, twenty twenty four.
According to the best of my skills and ability.
According to the best of my skills and ability.
I, Lou Struglia.
I, Lou Struglia.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the state of New Jersey.
Of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And the governments.
And the governments.
Established in the United States.
Established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
And partially.
And partially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Police chaplain.
Police chaplain.
According to the best of my skills and ability.
According to the best of my skills and ability.
Oh, God.
So help me God.
Lindsay? Family?
No, I gotta go. Same thing, there's something in the water. Did you see that? There was a fire department that all had.
Yes.
I did see that. We are gonna schedule these department head reports. I think coming up maybe in October, maybe.
Yeah, I think they're, uh, peace control is.
You wanna start with them? The rest of the season, let's start with that.
Um, October when they shut down? Yeah, chief's usually out on Thursday. So, but that's okay, we can get, we can probably get, um,
Start with them. And I wouldn't do more than one. Spread it out a little bit.
I didn't get a group picture. A group picture. I guess you. Everybody, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, everything, I got it. I got it. It's nice to have babies in the room. It's nice when they leave.
They're all future police officers.
Yeah. Okay, uh, the next on the agenda is department head reports. We have none today. But we'll begin that, uh, probably in October. We have, um, uh, we have no capital discussions this evening. Um, we have, uh, no, uh, we do not have minutes to approve from, uh, those, uh, file, uh, uh, the, uh, later items are scheduled to, uh, take action on. We have no minutes, uh, from, for approval. Uh, we have one ordinance for introduction tonight, um, Commissioner Langgraf would like to discuss this, uh, and is, uh, controls for reductions in plastic contaminants.
So this is.
Destruction site.
This is something that a lot of towns, especially Shoretown, are doing, um, with the move to plastic, uh, products instead of wood products. Um, the AZAC, the, the decking, the white material everybody puts on their homes, what do you mean? Um, we're looking to control that dust from getting into our waterways. Um, so this ordinance will require them to do, where as much as possible during enclosed area and attempt that they could set up.
Right.
Uh, put drop cloths down to collect the, the residue that comes out of the saws and the drills.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and that we're gonna put that into effect hopefully by early October.
Great.
By passing this tonight. So it preserves our waterings and gets, tries to keep as much plastics out of those waterways as possible.
Right. These are lifetime materials, so.
Yep.
I, I, I support this, um, this ordinance.
Yeah.
As well.
We actually did that when we built my thing.
You did.
We had.
You had them, you practiced it.
Dried down on top of my lawn.
Right.
And all the cutting was done.
Yep, I've seen it already starting to take, to take shape, but this kind of puts it, it formalizes it. Um, next, we have a public hearing and adoption uh, for ordinance zero two one regarding increase in our towing fees. This is one that we discussed in the past, bringing us up to, I think, more of a, a local standard. Any questions on that?
No.
Um, resolutions, um, uh, following resolutions will be voting on by consent this evening. Um, I'll go through them. If you have any questions on the items, please, um, type, please, uh, just stop me and, uh, first is, uh, resolution, uh, two five four. This is, uh, authorizes the event Manja Manja, uh, for September twenty ninth with the rain date of October sixth, also known as, uh, Dinner with Maria. Um, and it is sold out for this evening.
And there's a waiting list.
And there's a waiting list.
First year we sold out.
It's great. It's great. One of my favorite restaurants, one, one of many great restaurants in Venice.
Isn't that, will you be there? Oh.
That's the one time she's not, she has a meatball. It's vegetarian. All right, um, next is resolution, um, authorizing to, uh, mayor to execute three-year agreement with the American Cancer Society for the Bike-A-Thon. It was a great event. Um, and we're looking forward to keeping it and fine tuning that, the date, the dates and the, and the, then the, the layout. The dates would be June first of twenty twenty five, June seventh of twenty twenty six, and June sixth of twenty twenty seven, I believe.
So just to comment on that, when, last year when I was mayor, they pressured me to ride in this thing.
Okay.
So there's gonna be pressure put on yourself to do this this year.
I gotta, I gotta ride together. I gotta, all right, I gotta ride together. Uh, that's from Philly, right?
You can, you can jump on in Hammond. They offered that to me. We're only twenty-seven miles or something.
All right.
All right.
Well, let's see.
Think about it.
Yeah, think about it. That's what somebody always says when she doesn't wanna do something.
You see me do it last? They give out that many bikes too.
All right, so.
That would be the way I would do it.
Sounds good. Um, next is twenty, uh, two five six, resolution, uh, this is closing a boat ramp. Uh, along with some no parking for the American Cancer Society Bike-A-Thon for the, for, uh, be, for the first, uh, for this year, that would be, uh, in twenty twenty five, May thirtieth, twenty twenty five to June second, twenty twenty five. The actual event is scheduled on the first, so that's the boat ramp. Um, pretty straightforward, um. Twenty, uh, resolution two five seven is authorizing cancellation of tax for, uh, three sixteen Somerset Avenue. That is a hundred percent, uh, cancelization for a veteran. Um, two, two five eight is a revocable license for, uh, fifty-four hundred Edgewater Avenue, which was discussed at our last meeting and we discussed at the planning board as well. That was, uh, it's a good use of two lots by the same owner.
Yep, and the, and J reviewed it, we're good.
Yep, so. Um, two five nine, uh, is a resolution, again, a, a tax refund. This was a, a for, uh, seven, two, three North Little Rock Avenue. This was the mortgage company, I believe. Um, doubled the, the payment to us and we're refunding that amount. Um, resolution two six zero, uh, is, uh, chapter one fifty-nine for twenty twenty four ARP coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds in the amount of five hundred and seventeen thousand, eight hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty-eight cents. These funds will assist in the replacement of Somerset Avenue Sewer Main Project. Do you wanna add anything to that, um, Lance?
No, we had this project ready to go a couple of years ago when we got the red line replacement, uh, project moving forward, trying to get money for that. Kind of put this on hold for a little bit, but now we've got these funds that we need to use up by the end of the year.
Right.
This, right. That's the issue. We definitely have the funds, but, but we have to have them all by the end of this year or we have to give it back. And we'll incorporate the lead line replacement.
Right.
Yep. Into this.
Great.
So it'll be good. It's a couple of blocks of sewer line, so we need to get it done.
Yeah. So it's gonna be a busy, busy section of town.
It is.
Um, on all, uh, north, um, east, on, south and north. Um, next is, uh, two six one. This is a resolution, another cancellation of property tax on Somerset Avenue for a disabled veteran. Uh, two, six, two is our, um, uh, is a resolution that opposes the protection against climate threat, the pack resilient environments and landscape rules. The state has published a new proposed coastal rules with just significant impact on Atlantic County municipalities. These rules will, these new rules will restrict development and push homes and structures another five feet higher. This is something that Commissioner Langgraf has discussed early on. Do you wanna provide any more background on that?
Yeah, we've, uh, our, my biggest problem with this is that it was not done through legislative act. This was done by executive order, by the governor.
Right.
Um, doesn't follow through the normal process of making a law. He directed DEP to create these rules. They, in my opinion, a lot of the coastal community opinions, they're using failed data. Um, that's an old report. We're preparing for something a hundred years from now.
Hmm.
Where we should be doing incrementally. Forcing homeowners that just raised their homes to elevation twelve, to now move them up to elevation seventeen is ridiculous. So it, it's just, it's gonna stifle development in our communities. Um, we are already, we just did for stairs to put into the streets. How are you getting into these homes?
Right.
So that's not the only issue with it, but there's a lot of that that is going to, um, really restrict development on the barrier islands. Understanding, we know sea level's coming up. We have to work with that. But it should be done with a group effort. We've met here, we hosted two meetings here.
Yeah.
With Atlantic and Cape May County and some of Ocean County. We had, um, state senators here, Palestinians was here, uh, we had a representative, the deputy commissioner of the DEP was here. Thought he was listening, apparently not. They didn't change a darn thing in these rules.
Hmm.
That we've asked them to do, um. So we're, we're trying again, uh, Cape May County, and all the communities in Cape May County has opposed this. We're trying to do the same in Atlantic.
And, and it's not just homeowners, it's municipalities.
Yeah.
Is gonna be impacted by this. It's cost us more to comply.
One of the examples was if you build a parking lot, the parking lot now has to comply with flood elevations. Most ridiculous thing I've ever heard of in my life. Okay. What, what do you do on a barrier island when it's gonna flood? You move your car to high ground. You don't park it in a, in a parking lot that floods. You move it to a garage.
Casino.
Casino, right.
That's where you go.
So, you, you, you know, it's already hard enough to build parking lots on the islands. Now you're gonna make it even more hard.
Yeah.
Harder, so.
And we're not looking at this. There's other municipalities that are on board with this.
Um, all of the ones on the barrier islands, Reagan team, I don't know about Atlantic City. They don't really understand a lot of things, so.
Okay.
Um, we'll leave that at that. Margate, Longport, Ocean, everybody in Atlantic or Cape May County, um, even on the bayside of Atlantic County. Those communities are all in favor of it. They did the same thing for riverine, uh, areas.
Okay.
And those communities all opposed it. It, it's, it's honestly frustrating how lack of, um, response we're getting from the state.
Right.
That's what concerns me the most.
Right.
So.
Okay, so we're, I think we're all in agreement on this.
I think I said somewhere too, there's conflicting data also.
That's the problem.
Necessarily agree with the state's projections of when this is all gonna happen.
Right. Even the, even the professor at Rutgers that wrote the original report that they're relying on has said, look, there's new data out there.
Yeah.
And then there was an updated report. They're not looking at that new report. So.
Anything that comes from the state costs us millions.
Yeah.
Like hundreds of thousands of dollars and not millions, but no consideration, absolutely no consideration for what it's doing to the taxpayer in the city.
Okay, so I think we're all in agreement that this resolution to, um, oppose the, uh, resilient environment landscape rules. Um, moving on, the next, uh, two, three, six is a resolution that establishes a twenty-five dollar per mailed notice to the delinquent account for a tax sale. Pretty straightforward. Um, two, six, four, authorizes tax collector to participate in electronic sale. That's, that's a normal course of business. Um, resolution two, six, five, authorizes the closing of the boat ramp and no parking in areas beginning September eleventh through September thirteenth, sep- seventeenth for the Down Beach Seafood Festival. Um, that is for this year, this week. But, um, which is already underway for, uh, for, I'm sure, uh, for staging area.
I think John has moved into town.
Yeah.
His trailer is that. We should send him a tax bill.
Yeah.
Just as a kind of a little joke, just tape it to his door. Can we do that? He's here for three days. It's pro-rated.
Right, there you go. The, he's, 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 he's in charge of that, um, section of town.
He is. He takes over.
So, uh, uh, resolution two, six, six is authorize hiring a full-time parking enforcement officer for the city. This is, uh, Mario Lima. He's a retired um, sergeant. Um, the, um, uh, his, he's got a reputation for being very stringent and, uh, and has written a lot of, um, uh, while he'd be strictly parking enforcement, got a reputation for being very strict in this manner, so we can look for some, um, phone calls and ad reaction. Um, he was one of the top producers as a, as a sergeant and as an officer, so he'll be doing, uh, uh, he'll be added to that parking enforcement group. He'll be doing street cleaning, um, uh, both broken, uh, blocking drop, block driveways and in the North Beach area, the four-hour, um,
Parking permit.
Parking permit. Fair, so, um, so that's why they call it enforcement. Um, he's on enforcement. Um, so keep, keep an eye out there, um, and we're happy to have, so happy to have him back, uh, in that as a retired sergeant. So also it's good to have a person that has that kind of experience, uh, looking, um.
Got eyes on the street.
Uh, uh, our, our, our other, um, ri- uh, parking enforcement is retired police officer and has in number of ways has seen, um, has, because they're monitoring a radio, they've helped officers in other ways. Um, just by being a set of eyes. Um, next is two, six, seven, accepts the resignation of, uh, Dominic Capell the third and a, uh, a, uh, an art from, uh, uh, potential hiry that, um, is not, not going to make it through the academy. Sorry to, to resign. Um, next is two, six, eight. Um, closing out an escrow account in the name of, uh, Ammon Construction. I believe that's, uh, bulkhead.
It is.
Um, two, six, nine, uh, approves a permanent appointment of Fino Cavalieri for, to construction official, full-time.
Yep, we, we appoint those as temporary until they get, what, through six months?
Great, congratulations to him.
Yep.
Um, resolution two, seven, zero, authorized designing construction management services of Somerset Avenue, uh, Sewer Resolution two, seven, zero authorized designing construction management services of Somerset Avenue uh Sewer Main Replacement, which we talked about before the funding to Edgewater Avenue to Calver Avenue.
This is bringing in Remington Varnik to uh to man to get their specs out, get that project moving.
Right, and this is under uh Ed Stinson's.
Management service inspection, sorry.
Then this is gonna be another fast track program where we've put uh we're able to put some work on a short schedule returns around to get to be able to get a contract before the end of the year.
Great, great. Any other questions there? Pretty still straightforward. Uh, two, seven, one is a resolution authorizing De Blasio and associates prepare bid documents and specifications for the purchase of boardwalk decking. Um, so it's a four thousand includes preparation of bid documents, advertising for bids, bid review, recommendations of award for boardwalk decking material procurement and uh working with our city engineer. Um, and any questions there? That's uh that's for the procurement of the boardwalk.
Correct. We were we were suggested that we use a lot of the state money that we're getting to purchase this stuff ahead of time. And outside of, you know, we think we can get a better price just bidding it out from what we're directed by both de Blasio and our city engineer, Ed Stinson, so that's where we're going out. We'll try and purchase this stuff and they'll they'll hold it for us until we're ready to use it, which will be quickly. Um, we have to have the whole boardwalk or at least the section we're replacing done by twenty twenty six.
Hmm.
December. This is essentially a change order to the contract I already have with them to do the design, uh but that did not include, this was, you know, it was decided later to separate this out to purchase the decking ahead of time and to perform those services for us. That's what this fee is for.
Great, great. Um, so uh then we would have uh and then we'd be ready to to begin the the process when that design construction is, we'll have the materials on it. Um, we'll be adding two resolutions on the bench tonight. Resolution twenty twenty four dash two, seven, two, resolution um awarding the contract to Leathers and Associates for renovations of the Seashore Children's Park and Playground. Presumed to NJSA um forty A dash eleven dash five. So that that is the 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 that is the company that designed and fabricated the Seashore Playground and similar playgrounds. Um, so upgrade, upgrade.
Sure, it means a lot of repairs. Um, we have to go just to them because it's sole provider.
Right.
For that material, those materials, we're not even allowed to hit and touch most of it.
Right.
We can't. We have to call them in to do this work, so it's close to a hundred thousand dollars in in improvements. Um, so Tom and I and Rick and the gang, when Ed Stinson went out there and looked at it, and we brought these guys in and they're gonna do this work for us quickly, a great winner, so.
Great, great. Um, and it's a busy park. Uh, you know, my daughter was raised going to that park. It's it's a great, and then we have a handful of.
It's time, it means it, it's time.
Just means it now.
Yeah.
There there's a ton of work that starts.
Ton of work, yeah.
Look at the scope for it that's proposed. It's it's substantial, replacing a lot of the equipment. You know, so.
Yeah, yeah.
It's only been a few weeks ago, too.
So we did the um, we did the base, we rubberized uh flooring there.
Right.
We redesigned all that. Ed came in and redesigned it, so now it flows, the water drains through it and doesn't back up, cause problems.
And there's nothing being done to that. This is all just the uh the the equipment and the fencing and all the all that stuff.
I said, there's.
Replacing the slide, pardon me.
Different fencing, new fencing, like I know that's been an issue.
Where it needs to be replaced, it's gonna be replaced.
What, right.
It's mostly the equipment. It's not really fencing work. There might be some repairs where they had some pickets, some pickets there, yeah. It's mostly the equipment itself.
But them.
They're gonna, they're gonna go very quickly. They're gonna power wash the structure and replace plastic caps with upgraded aluminum caps.
No people.
They'll be making repairs to the framing, power washing the decking, power washing all the uh handrails. Power wash decking and rails of the accessible ramps. Fit with the fence, they're gonna fix broken posts and repair uh framing, replacing the slide, the spiral tube slide.
Right.
Replacing support legs on the fence, uh other replacing missing wide slide with new one with two beds. That's a fencing thing. Replacing the swings, horizontal ladder, ring bridge, chinup pipe, all that's being replaced.
Great.
Yeah, Rick's got an update, too?
Yeah, just in addition to that, they perform the most basic compliance related application standards.
Good.
They're constantly changing the mitigation by minor changes.
Right.
Holds the slide chain to distances of type uh certain things where it's managed to be, so in addition to this major cleanup, uh we're gonna be completely compliant with both cases.
Great, good. Thanks, Rick.
And and again, uh half of this money is from a grant, so I think the award is about ninety nine thousand, remember fifty thousand dollar grant. Uh, there's also probably some money that was left over from the original committee that there, I think that's gonna get turned over to us. That'll also be applied to this.
Great.
Uh, and then the rest will come out of the general improvements to that whole facility that you approved in the bond agreements back in the spring.
Good. Great. It's a great asset. It's a popular park, especially uh in the summertime. Um, resolution twenty twenty, and the other one we're adding to the bench is twenty twenty four dash two, seven, three. Um, this is authorizing the hiring of part-time uh school traffic guards, very well, very much needed, um and just in time. Um, then we'll have uh bills and payroll, and we have one discussion item tonight. Um, parking regulations for one hundred block of North Derby. Tom, do you wanna?
Oh, yeah, start. Yeah, so last two Saturdays ago, we had a meeting with the residents of of the one hundred and two hundred block of North Derby. ACRA, our trash and recycling collection, um vehicles are having trouble getting down this portion of the road. Um, if you know Derby Avenue, the one hundred block has a significant curve in it, almost ninety degree turn, um with a little bit of a radius on it. They have trouble getting through there when cars are parked on the inside of that curve. So we met with the residents, um we came up with a solution that a portion of that inside of that curve for a certain I think it's three hours on Wednesday mornings from seven AM to ten AM, will be no parking. Um, the residents supported that. So um that's what we're gonna, we're gonna prepare an ordinance for that for next month and get that into play. ACRA was was here with us. That was a really good meeting. I thought it went really well. Um, so they, that was their suggestion and then the residents were okay with that.
Just in time for uh Mario Lima to get out there proportioning.
Exactly. There we go.
Say.
Yep.
Well, Lance, if I may, one of the things we've discussed afterwards, what what we got feedback from the residents and from the ACRA is that they're usually there by seven o'clock in the morning to do the collection. So we thought we should probably adjust the hours maybe from six thirty to nine, you know.
I just knew we were gonna come up with the exact hours with ACRA, but it was roughly that three-hour timeframe to let them come through with delays and whatever, and they also picked, I think they're gonna add um yard waste to that same day.
Right.
They're gonna do it all one day for that area, so.
That'll be good.
Yes, we'll have to 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 get a specific description of the of the area. We know that it runs roughly from uh one oh seven North Derby. There's a fire hydrant to go from there to Dorset on that north side to make that no parking during that period of time. So we need to get a legal description, put in the ordinance for Nicole, and then let's, you know, we need to settle on what we're gonna do as far as the.
I think if we're Rick and Ed, we can have them at dimensions.
Yeah.
Carved out. Get that, get the linear delineation.
We'll look to have that ready to introduce at the next meeting.
Signage is easy.
Okay.
So we'll look to have that ready to introduce at the next meeting.
Yes, please.
Great, all right, discussion.
Yeah.
Um, can I, uh, I'd like to, uh, so uh we'd like to open um uh for public comment, any items that we've discussed so far? Can I have a motion to open uh for public comment?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes, so at this time, members of the public may comment on anything that we have discussed so far. Uh, there will be another co- public comment session at the end of the meeting to discuss anything you would like. Uh, if you wish to speak, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes.
Hi, good, good, good evening. My name is Sherri Rowianfeld. I am a resident of Margate. Um, but I'm here because of your ordinance twenty 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 four zero twenty two. I'm super thrilled to see this. Um, myself and Steve Giacchi from the Margate Green Team introduced this ordinance. It was just an idea in Margate, October twenty twenty three. Um, I do have a couple of comments regarding the implementation of it from some things that I've learned. Um, cause first of all, it's great to have an ordinance, as you know, but you need to enforce it. Now, Margate, when we introduced this, the building department was there, Roger McClellan was there, the police department was there, and they all realized that everyone's involved in enforcement. So for Vettina, like you need a champion, you need someone that people can call and report a problem at a worksite and that someone's gonna show up and and deal with it. We call the building department. We call um Jim Jimmy, um, you know, from the building department.
Galantino.
Galantino, thanks. I always get confused with Agostino, you know, I know he's not here anymore, but anyway, we called Jimmy Galantino and he I send him pictures on his cell phone. I tell him the site. He shows up. He has also, we have things, um, we have flyers.
Okay.
That we give them. Happy to share them.
That would be great.
With you. Um, so it it's an educational process, like the builders need to understand you're not doing this to be mean to them. You're not doing this to put more restrictions on them. You're actually doing it for their benefit as well as the benefit of the community.
Sure.
You know, they don't realize when they're sitting over a saw producing microplastics and building it in and getting it all over their clothes. They're taking this home. It's in their car. Their kids get subjected to it, goes in the water. Like, they don't realize it's a problem for them. But anyway, there's an educational process that has to go on. Um, when permits are given out, supposed to give them, here, you can, I don't know if you.
We got the digital copy, too. We can print it out.
Send you a digital copy. We also have it in Spanish and English and Spanish.
Great.
Um, so who, so what I'm saying is people, uh residents have to know, they need to know who to call also. We had ideas like putting a sign up, you know, how's our worksite, you know, call this number. Did, we have a lot of ideas and you may choose to implement some or others, and Steve and I are happy to talk with you.
Good.
Um, about some of them, or you can have a poster up. There's an affidavit builders have to sign. You know, when they get permits about different things they're gonna do, protect stormwater, like we can include this. One big thing that they'll start saying is, oh, my goodness, this is gonna cost us so much money. But first of all, there's so many inexpensive things that they can buy, like you can go on Amazon, you can get a tent for over to put over a saw with a vacuum attachment. It's a hundred and thirty nine dollars. You get this tent and Steve has a whole bunch of pictures of all of these attachments, which we we're happy to also send to you. But the reason I'm here speaking to you is because the ordinance is great, but it has to be implemented right. There has to be education and who's ever gonna get, someone has to be the lead in going out to these work sites and talking and educating. So anyway, so I I don't know, like, what is your plan for implementing? You have not gotten.
It's like any other code. It's in the code office. It's in the construction office. Any other code is enforced, construction code is enforced by a construction official.
So then is your construction office up, you know, will they be handing out these flyers?
Just go into every packet.
Awesome. That's great. And then um people need to know, residents need to know who to call, like maybe you could put up on your website.
Trust me, residents know where to call when they.
Uh, well, you'd be surprised. I'm like, I I run into people all the time, all the, all they do.
We'll we'll give Jimmy that down uh Galantino's number.
He's very good at it.
So we we get it. I'm gonna talk to Dino about it.
Okay.
They know where that it's coming, so this is something that that we're gonna implement and it'll be in every, not just contractors packets, you know, if someone comes in to work in their home.
Right.
If they're gonna use plastics or anything, they gotta be able to control the dust, so.
Into the streets in the stormwater, and I'm sure we already have ordinance in place for stormwater, and then that's the other question, are there gonna be fines? Refereed and and in your ordinance for violations, like what's your?
Yes, there, there are.
There are fines incorporated like any, like any ordinance, so.
It follows the same.
Yeah.
It follows the same as the the other littering piece of the um code that we already kind of attached this to.
Okay.
That's specifically added in here, and it's also specifically in there. I know you touched upon it already, but that the notice of this um provision of the ordinance is actually gonna be given for any new permit that's issued with construction, whether it's construction renovation, and that even says or related activities to any of that, it should cover, so it should be well. It should be out there for sure.
Okay, what is the fine amount if they're after it?
Um, I think after the second one, it's a thousand dollars. Have to pull that.
Okay.
But, yeah.
That sounds strong, but I appreciate what you're doing. I mean, you have to have word, any ordinance is only as good as the enforcement.
Yes, exactly.
Not just that every ordinance that works, and there's always, you know, a hundred percent compliance is a goal, but
Yeah.
It's not always achievable, but you know, most people do wanna follow the rules when they know the rules, so you're right, a hundred percent. You know, getting the information off on all of our website, our newsletter, we have a uh we say the newsletter, a social media platform with fourteen thousand followers.
It it would be good to put it there. I I mean, even though you, who to call is usually a few handful, you know who to call. I hear people all the time complaining.
Yep.
And they don't, they complain to their friends, and they don't call the right party.
Right.
Um, and you know, we wanna see it. It, we wanna see it for the intent of it, and that's to keep the area clean and safe for everyone. And and like you said, punishment comes from people, from the builder's understanding, it's not to be mean. It's it's for their safety as well as the safety of everyone.
They'll talk among themselves, I'm sure. They'll start to, but thank, thank you for your help.
And and thank you for for putting it on the books. We really, we really admire that and appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hi, Steve Giacchi, I'm talking with Mike Hester, Marty. Um, uh, backing up Sherri here, Sherri was very passionate about this, in fact, she's the one that wrote the ordinance up and got the whole thing, brought the whole ball rolling, and as sure communities, you guys are now completing the Down Beach. And if we can get a length, we get Abseken, um, the whole Abseken Island.
Hmm.
We really feel that this should be a state issue. It should be, it should be a federal issue. I mean, because plastics is now the the latest thing. I mean, it was lead, it was asbestos, all kinds of things. We're really happy about promoting this. And um, you know, we communicate anywhere we can to help you guys out, and uh, that's it.
Thanks. Yeah, thanks. Uh, if there are no more comments by the audience, uh, is there any comments in the Zoom? Jim?
Yeah, Matt, Matt wishes to speak. Uh, Matt? Hey, y'all, can you hear me? Yes. All right, thanks a lot. Uh, I'm with Surf Rider Foundation and specifically our our volunteer-led chapter, um, South Jersey chapter. And uh we also support this ordinance uh O twenty two to to contain this plastic dust seems like a a no-brainer. If you've seen the photos, it looks like snow on the ground. It's crazy, and I think everyone now is has seen how plastic has has just gone everywhere and it's in our bodies now. It's really scary, so this seems like a no-brainer, not not too much of a hassle for builders, not too soon to to buy some different attachments and uh we thank you for working on this and and see it passed. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it. I work at Surf Rider. Uh, any other comments from the Zoom community?
No.
Hearing none other, can I have a motion to close the public?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Uh, at this time, can I have a motion to close the workshop portion of the meeting and open the regular sec, the regular meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Call the order, the regular portion of the meeting, may I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Uh, we have no minutes to approve this evening. Uh, can I have a motion to introduce ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero two two, ordinance, mending chapter one ninety seven Streets and Sidewalks, Article Three, Littering and Obstructions, to include controls for dust and plastic contaminants at construction sites?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Can I have a motion to open for a public hearing, ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero two one?
I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero two.
Second.
And roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. This is the ordinance regarding towing fees. Seeing none in the, in chambers, any comments on Zoom?
Anybody on Zoom wish to speak or comment on this ordinance? None.
Are you none? Can I have a motion to close?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Can I have a motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero two one as described?
Motion to adopt ordinance twenty twenty four dash zero two one.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. All right, moving on to, uh, motions, uh, by consent. Can I have a motion to adopt resolutions twenty twenty four dash? Two, five, four through twenty twenty four dash two, seven, one, and resolutions. Twenty twenty four dash two, seven, two, and resolution twenty twenty four dash two, seven, three, by consent.
Make a motion to adopt resolutions twenty twenty four, two, five, four through two, seven, three.
Second.
Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Amy, would you read bills and pay, payroll, please?
Payables for this period is six million nine hundred seventy six thousand two hundred ninety four dollars and sixty cents.
Thank you.
Payrolls for this period, one million four hundred eighty four thousand three hundred six dollars and eleven cents.
Thank you. May I have a motion to pay bills and payroll?
So moved.
Um, I second and recusing myself from the three payments to the ACRA for digital media recycling and trash.
Thank you. A roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. Seeing no, uh, announcements or safety reports this evening. I'll move on to, uh, commissioner comments at, um, uh, Commissioner Mento, do you have any comments?
No, I don't think I have anything for tonight. Business as usual.
Commissioner Langgraf, do you have any comments or report?
I have a few. Um, just some updates, uh, the traffic signal project on Vettner Avenue from Oxford to Jackson. If you've driven there, you've noticed that all the traffic signals are down, so be careful going through those intersections. They have temporary stop signs on the cross streets. Just be careful going through that area. It was gonna be under construction for about the next couple of months. So we're adding all new traffic signals there. Um. The, they've started the construction. Um, like I said, it's gonna be moving forward. This will be similar to the county project, although we did the bump outs to provide better pedestrian safety. And, um, traffic control at those intersections. So, um, we changed it up a little bit, better grading there, a lot better solution. We think it's a better solution than all the curbs that they did on the other section, so, um, in that. They are. In that same area, Little Rock Avenue is a separate project. That is a pedestrian only crossing, um, signal that'll be installed. We finally got the materials in. We've been waiting like five months for the. The actual equipment that'll be installed, that's been received. They should be putting that in over the next week or so, and they'll be operable. Over the next two to three weeks.
Great.
And that's a, it's for, there's a, um, eyesight impaired couple that lives in the area. Uh, we got a grant to help with that intersection and put that, um, impaired technology in. So it'll be a flashing. They'll be able to push the button and it'll flash and say, look, passenger, pedestrians are crossing here, so. Um.
This has been a few years.
It has, yeah.
It has.
You know, not that we didn't try to push it along as quickly as possible.
Right.
Takes time.
We're giving a lot of money for it from the feds, so it helps. That's why it takes longer.
I remember you working with the.
The couple, yeah.
Yep, yep.
Will be happening.
Um, also in that same area of the city, Winchester Avenue Bulkhead, um, sorry, chief, they showed up a little early today. I know, sorry about that. For the pre-construction meeting yesterday, I thought they could start, so, um, we'll work through that. I know Ed's working with you to try and get them. Um, moving in a better direction. So that work should start next week. What they did today was move some, some equipment there. Mobilization, uh, that will be the, the, um, bulkhead that runs from Jackson Avenue down Winchester. Uh, what's the cross street? I forget at the end of it, but anyway.
Great.
By the crab house.
By the.
It's that street.
Yeah, it's, uh, right before Jackson.
Yeah.
Second one, yeah, in from Jackson.
Well, it's great. It's, it's further down than that.
Right.
Crab house. So that'll be working over the next few months. There will be a challenge there connecting to Atlantic City's boardwalk. They did not install their bulkhead particularly plum. So that's gonna be a little bit of an issue there, but we gotta work around, so. Um, two projects on the boardwalk that one is still ongoing at Vassar. Uh, we're working with the Vassar condominium group. Some of their, um, boardwalk supports that they extend the boardwalk to their property had failed. We're working with them to get that repaired. Portions of it are already complete, should be done early next week, the rest of it.
Austin Avenue.
Austin, thank you. Um, going back to the Winchester area, that's all right. Oh, that's helpful. The other one, Derby Avenue was completed this week. We had dirt and cornwall. We had a piling fail on that area. Uh, we had a contract, Arthur Henry come in and fixed that in less time than they anticipated. So that's back fully operational on that area. Um, these are showing us why we have to replace the boardwalk.
Right.
This is the exact reason. I wish we hadn't, you know, didn't have to do it before we replaced everything, but we gotta keep access to it, so, um. I want you to talk about Seafood Fest, or?
Um, yeah, briefly, briefly.
That's all I have.
Seafood Fest is, you know, starting this weekend. They're already starting to stage that. I, I would just mention that it is also, uh, an operational training exercise for us in the county. So we put our. Uh, the, our shared service, uh, command center, uh, trailer that we work with, uh. With, uh, Margate and Longport, that becomes a mobile, uh, command center. Um, and it, it is actually. Uh, because of the organization of it, um, and because of the, um, we're, uh, the, the, um. Uh, it becomes part of our, our training points with the county. Um, we do, uh, we have, uh, three inspectors. Uh, onsite with eighty inspections, uh, for, for all these, uh, food vendors. Um, and we have two EMS there. So I'm just talking about the fire side of it, but it is just a great event. That's part of it. It's a safe event. And it, and they, uh, and John Henderson and Good Time Trikeschool has created this, uh, uh, this environment there that really makes that. Um, that use of every square inch of ski beach from the, from the, uh, the kids areas to the. To the, the beer tent, to the stage and the, and the activities that go on there. So it's a, it's a, it's a really, uh, it's a banner event for the fall. And it's a good time at the fall, um, that kind of gives us that shoulder season. Um. Um, but I also wanna thank, um, the police and, uh, for the, the, the summer specials. They did a great job this year and, uh, the beach patrol will have them in for, um. Or, uh, try to get them in for one of our first apartment head meetings, just to sort of debrief us all about, uh. All the activities that, uh, happen this summer as we get into that. Um, we're also, the, 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 uh, ban shell is out to bid now. So we're, we'll be waiting on the, on, on bid results for that, so we can gear that up soon. Um. Yeah, we also, uh, are now, uh, fully, we're funded for a PPE grant for the fire department, seventy five thousand dollars. Um, that goes towards, um, uh, jackets, pants and boots. Uh, each reset of those, that equipment is a five thousand dollars per individual. And, and, and part of the, the, part of the, the state requirements are that they have two sets, so that one can be dec- be contaminated after an event. Um, so we're getting closer to that. That's working with Jim Matella. Uh, we have a total of a hundred twenty five thousand dollars in grants for that. It doesn't, uh, uh, so it doesn't, doesn't cover the entire group, but as this, as we go through the years and. Uh, we'll get more and more of these, um, jackets, pants and boots, uh, for our men. Um. And, um, oh, we also are getting a forced entry simulation, uh, with, uh, Margate and Longport. So this is a, a device that allows our fire department to, um, to stimulate forced entry. It's working with the police department in Vettner and Margate and Longport as well. So it's something that, um, allows them. To train new officers on, um, on forced entry if, if needed in a, in an emergency situation. A lot going on.
There's a lot going on. Just finalize some details on Seafood Fest. It's Saturday and Sunday.
Saturday and Sunday.
Noon to seven, I believe, is the timeline on it. Um, seafood, music, uh, the clam chowder contest.
Clam chowder.
Amazing.
Crab eating, they're like a crab cake eating.
It does a crab cake eating contest, it does.
Right.
So, it'll be fun.
There's a little area for, like a playground area for kids, um, and then there's music all day. It's a, it's a really, it's, it's, it's really one of the best events that we have. Um, also, the farmer's market is why, has wound down for the years, so we're, we're thankful for them as well.
Sad.
Yeah, they did a great job. John, John jumped into some deep shoes and, and did a, uh, yeoman's work on it, getting it done. He's got a few more gray hairs, but he's, he, he did enjoy it.
All right, um, so, uh, can I have a, uh, open the, uh, open the meeting for public comment? Um, I have a motion to open the, well, well done with.
Yep.
Commissioner comments, I have a motion to open for public comment.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Have a roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes, so now we'd be open to, um, to the public to discuss any topic of interest. Uh, if you'd like to, please come to the microphone or on, make yourself known on Zoom, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none in the chambers, Jim, do you have any comments on Zoom?
Anybody on Zoom wish to make any comments? No.
Are you none? Can I have a motion to close comment?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, Lisa?
Commissioner Langgraf?
Yes.
Commissioner Mento?
Yes.
Mayor Kribel?
Yes. We have no executive session this evening and there is no further, further business.[1787.13]